The organizational meeting of council to order on November the 10th, two thousand twenty five. I'd like to acknowledge that we are in treaty five territory. The city of Thompson is located on the ancestral lands of Mitchell Springs and Free Nation. And we respect the spirit and the decent treaty making and remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations Inuit and Maki people in the spirit of truth reconciliation and collaboration. This basically is our last official organizational meeting of our tenure for this past four years. So we've had three years of our four. It's definitely been exciting. This past year has been a very busy one with our construction on the ISOP projects now. Uh, the aquatic sector generally coming out of the ground now and seeing that the completion of the bridge, uh, the airport could be done in the very near future. Uh, it's just been a busy time for the city of Thompson and are very proud of all of our fellow councillors. I think we have worked together uh, very well and supported each other. Uh, definitely great. Our admin team, uh, definitely uh, couldn't do it without them. It's uh, uh, definitely been a, a great uh, working with everybody and uh, through our frustrations, their frustrations and getting work done, but it all seems to work out in the end. Uh, special thanks here to Anthony, Lynn and Lyle. Uh, definitely uh, couldn't do it without you and without Tammy pushing all of us up there to keep us where we come off of that so. Uh, with that being said, I'm looking forward to this last year as being a very busy one uh, with our developments in the city. We're still pushing on with our possible development here that is, is working. And uh, different projects, uh, our last uh, group that we're on through the next couple of years with the ISOP projects and looking forward to what we're going to do after that. Uh, one of the big things coming up in the near future is our winter games. Uh, we've been lucky enough to host them. This will be, you know, our third time hosting the Manitoba Winter Games. March first to the seventh is coming year. So uh, that's very exciting uh, times for us and all the different things that go on in our community and our North Stars are managed to keep that hockey team and uh, they're uh, looking to get it, you know, a bit better stand in the standings and with our support and uh, being there, uh, they will be doing this. But again, I just would like to thank all of council who being so supportive and looking forward to this last year of term with all of you. Thank you. Next, would I get approval of the agenda? Kathy? Standard or favor? Thank you. Uh, next is the appointment of deputy mayor. I have uh, talked to a couple of you and uh, some have come to me and, and talked to me and uh, my choice for deputy mayor uh, this year is uh, uh, going to be a continuing of Louis Fitzpatrick. Uh, we have worked together very well this past year. Uh, he has uh, the time and commitment. Uh, I can call him on an hour's notice and he can attend things for me. Uh, he's very well versed with the public in that and I appreciate all that he has done over this past year for me and uh, continue uh, working with him. And I know he gets along with all that fellow councillors here. So uh, definitely he'll be looking forward to, to uh, working with all of you. So with that, um, um, I'd like to appoint Louis. Thank you. Uh, I'm assuming you will agree to do this?
Uh, yes, thank you, mayor. I'll agree to doing this. I look forward to another year.
Thank you. Okay, next we're gonna go into resolutions. Six point one is a resolution to appoint members of council to the board of revision. Resolution two zero two five. Wrong my glasses, folks. One thing I've heard over the last three years, I now need glasses to read. Resolution two zero two five one seven eight moved by Constable Oberdorfer, seconded by Constable Wong. Be it resolved that the following members of council are hereby appointed to the board of revision for the city of Thompson for two thousand twenty six. Constable Chong, Constable Oberdorfer, Constable Saw and alternate Colleen Smook. And therefore be it resolved there. Constable Wong, oh, Constable Chong is hereby appointed as chairman of the board and be it further resolved that Lynn Taylor is hereby appointed as secretary to the administration. Comments?
Nothing further.
Constable Oberdorfer, any comments to smooth them? Are there other council comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor. Six point two is a resolution to appoint member of council to the vehicle for hire commission. Resolution two oh two five one seven nine moved by Constable Wong, seconded by Constable Oberdorfer. It resolved that the following members of council are hereby appointed to the vehicle for hire commission. Constable Chong, Constable Saw, Constable Oberdorfer, Constable MacIver and Constable Wong. And further be it resolved that Duncan Wong is hereby appointed as chairperson of the vehicle for hire commission. And further be it resolved that Oswald Saw is appointed as vice chair for the vehicle for hire commission. Administration?
Nothing further.
Constable Wong is mover. Any comments?
Nothing further.
Any other comments from council? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor. Thank you all very much for sitting on this and also the first appointment. Six point three is a resolution appointing members of council to the building standards meeting. Resolution two zero two five one eight zero moved by Constable Wong, seconded by Constable Oberdorfer. Be it resolved that following members of council are hereby appointed to the building standards committee. Constable Oberdorfer, Constable Valentino, Constable Fitzpatrick and alternate Colleen Smook, your school. And further be it resolved that Constable Oberdorfer is hereby appointed as chairperson at the building standard. And further be it resolved that uh, is acting chairperson for the building standard. Is there one of the names that wishes to come forward? Constable Valentino is on your hand.
Yes. Was waiting, so.
All those, any, any further comments? Call for the question. All those in favor. Thank you all. Six point four is a resolution to appoint signing authorities. Resolution two zero two five one eight one moved by Constable Saw, seconded by Constable Chong. Whereby, by the virtue of bylaw two oh one seven two oh two two being the city of Thompson organizational procedure bylaw, the mayor and the deputy mayor are authorized to sign or authorize agreement, check agreements or checks and other negotiable instruments of the city of Thompson. And whereas the bylaw further provides that said arrangements, checks and other instruments shall also be signed by the city manager, acting city manager, chief financial officer, assistant financial officer or a designated officer appointed by resolution at the annual organization meeting of council. Now therefore be it resolved that the following people, persons be appointed as signing officers for November tenth, two thousand twenty five until further notice for the bank account and for any and all other negotiable documents of the city of Thompson. Any coup of the follow. Chief financial officer, assistant financial officer, financial specialist, city manager or acting city manager, mayor and deputy mayor. Administration, make some terms?
Nothing further than worship.
Oh, did you saw any comment? Oh.
Um, they, they said the financial specialist, actually the title is financial, I think.
Make up for the movement there.
My circle came to point. Okay. With that, we'll call for the question. All those in favor. Okay, meeting. Uh, next six point five was a resolution to destroy organizational leading ballot, uh, which we did not require a ballot. Thank you.
That's correct. Your quickest way is call for the question. If everyone votes against it, it's impeded.
With that, we'll call for the question. All those in favor? Oppose? Thank you.
So I didn't know about.
No, so what I said is otherwise you have to pass a motion to remove her from the agenda. So you have two options. Someone makes a motion to remove this item from the agenda. Then you vote on that or you call for the question and vote against this. Don't vote for it. And then it's defeated. So it's your choice if someone would like to make a motion or you're making a motion to uh, remove it from the agenda?
Yes.
Will this second her?
Constable Oberdorfer, all those in favor? Okay, so the motion is that we remove it. Uh, resolution six point five from the agenda. All in favor? Of both? It's carried. All for German? Constable Masager, Constable Valentino, all in favor?
I thought so. Don't think we made one with Jan. Such a good man. I just can't say.
Do something. I'd like to call the regular meeting of council from November the tenth, two thousand twenty five to order at seven twenty three. I'd like to acknowledge that we're in treaty five territory and the city of Thompson is located on the ancestral land, Mitchell Springs and Free Nation. We respect the spirit and intent of treaties and treaty making and remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations Inuit and Maki peoples in spirit of truth reconciliation and collaboration. May I have an approval of the agenda? Constable Valentino, Constable Oberdorfer, all in favor? Next, we're going into adoption of minutes. Is uh, regular meeting of council October the twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five. Resolution two zero two five one eight three moved by Constable Valentino, seconded by Constable Chong. Be it resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, October twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five be adopted as cert, uh, circulated. Administration?
Nothing further.
Constable Valentino?
Nothing further.
The other comments? Call for the question. All those in favor. Eric, thank you. Four point two is adoption minutes for the committee of the whole meeting, November the third, two thousand twenty five. Resolution two zero two five one eight four moved by Constable MacIver, seconded by Constable Chong. Be it resolved that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of council held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba on Monday, November the third, two thousand twenty five be adopted as circulated. Administration?
Uh, nothing further.
Constable MacIver? Any other comments from council? Call for the question. All those in favor. Thank you. Next, we're going into resolutions. Resolution five point one is a resolution appointing designated officers to the Canada Revenue Agency. Resolution two zero two five one eight five moved by Constable Valentino, seconded by Constable MacIver. Whereas the city of Thompson is a body um, corporate in the province of Manitoba as enacted by the Thompson Charter, SM nineteen eighty nine, uh, ten ninety, uh, C eighty three. And whereas the city of Thompson engages in tax and payment transactions with the Canada Revenue Agency. Therefore be it resolved that the city of Thompson hereby appoint the following employees by designated, as designated offers, officers of the city of Thompson authorized to act on behalf of the city for Canada Revenue J H C. Jay Anthony McInnis, city manager, chief administrative officer. Lynn Taylor, chief financial officer. J C Bonner, assistant chief financial officer. Lumeen uh, Selu, project financial speci, specialist. And be it further result that Anthony McInnis, city manager, be authorized to complete and submit any necessary documentation to the Canada Revenue Agency confirmed, uh, confirming these appointments. Administration?
Yes, so the Canada Revenue Agency requested that council pass this resolution just to formalize the appointment similar to how we do with the signing authorities with the bank. Um, and once this is passed, I will work with the Canada Revenue Agency to make sure that all the updated names are on uh, the listing for CRA.
Anything further? Okay. Constable Valentino, is the mover?
Uh, no, nothing further.
Other councillors' comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor. Eric. Five point two is a resolution to sponsor the Hudson Bay Rouge Association Annual General Meeting being held here at the end of thombs. Resolution two zero two five one eight six moved by Constable Saw, seconded by Constable Valentino. Whereas the Hudson Bay Rouge Association will be hosting their annual general meeting in Thompson on Wendy, Wednesday, November the twelfth and Thursday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty five. And whereas this event promotes Thompson, supports the local economy and promotes economic development of the north through HBRAs advocacy benefiting the city of Thompson and the wider region. Now therefore be it resolved that the council approved a sponsorship for fifteen hundred dollars to the Hudson Bay Rouge Association Annual General Meeting, which will be uh, born out of the two thousand and twenty five sponsorship account. Administration?
Yes, so it was discussed the last committee, the whole, it's expected that about a, uh, eighty to a hundred participants will be in Thompson to attend these meetings. Um, council currently has seventy five hundred dollars remaining for this sponsorship account. So you have the funds to make this sponsorship. And as was recommended, the fifteen hundred dollars level support was selected by council at their discussions the last committee.
Thank you. Constable Saw, is the mover?
No, I'll be to support the resolution of course, and same as being the host community is a, uh, uh, as appropriate person to, to, to sponsor this event. So I'll be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from councillors? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor. Eric. And as mentioned, that is being held uh, this week, the fourth and the thirteenth. And anyone that wishes to attend this uh, AGM, uh, please contact the Hudson Bay Rouge Association. Five point three is a resolution to approve the change order number thirteen for ACON road design project. Resolution two zero two five one eight seven moved by Constable Saw, seconded by Constable Oberdorfer. Whereas on March le, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty two, council passed resolution number two oh two two oh four seven approving the tabulation of prices for the road renewal design for ACON for the total contract one five, one million five hundred and sixty seven thousand, five hundred and thirty two dollars plus applicable taxes on tender file number one oh three two two. And whereas ACOM submitted change order number thirteen for additional contract administration services fees for three weather days. Now therefore be it resolved that council approved the additional contract change order number thirteen for the additional contract administration services fees for three weather days for road design project. Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, ISOP, roads, R N C I S ten twenty seven, project number six oh six eight one two seven seven for the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty eight dollars and thirty one cents. Bring this total contract value to two million, eight hundred and three thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and twenty three cents. Administration, Lyle?
Nothing further.
Constable Saw is the mover?
No, nothing further. Thank you.
Call for the question. All those in favor. Eric.
So okay, so I'll
First.
Didn't ask.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not ask. There was a comment from other councillors. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Constable Wong, I apologize. Councillor Wong, I apologize.
I think the, the rate of charge is a bit outrageous. If you do the math, you divide by two people, you're talking about twenty, two hundred. It also takes the charging extra. So even you do all the math, this doesn't work that much to me. I would not like to support these changes. If the price is fair, I will, I will agree, but this fair, this price outrageous to me. So I will not support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Did you have any comments, Lyle? Further? Again, call for the question. All those in favor. Opposed? It is carried. 5.4 is a resolution authorizing administration to close a trust account. Resolution 2025-188, moved by councillor Oberdorfer, seconded by councillor Valentino. Whereas a trust account bearing the name Thompson Community Centre Trust was established during the construction of the Thompson Community Centre. And whereas the purpose of this account was to receive monies from private soldiers and corporations for the project and be transferred to the city general operating account to offset the expenditures. And whereas at the end of the construction, there was a total of $18,324.77 remaining in the account which should have been transferred to general operating. And whereas this account is interest-bearing and has continued to accumulate from 2020 to the current date. Now therefore be it resolved that the chief financial officer be authorized to close out the Thompson Community Centre Trust account 91-00210. And further be it resolved that the monies in this account be transferred to the Thompson Aquatic Facility Trust account to offset the construction costs of the project. Administration, Beth?
Thank you, Mayor Smook. The, as I said, the account is interest-bearing and I, I didn't feel in the math that is actually existing in the account because it will depend on what the interest earnings are from the end of September until the account is officially closed. But at the end of September, there were $21,451 in that account. The, all of the money for the TRCC when it was constructed was, was accounted for and that one, it should have gone to the general account to offset some of those expenses. But for some reason, at the end of 2018, that didn't occur. So the accounts is still active in the books. Things that transferring it to another recreation facility such as the aquatic test is, is a prudent thing to do.
Thank you. Councillor Oberdorfer is a mover. Comments?
Thank you. I'll be supporting the resolution. I don't have any issues with it.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor. Eric. Just before we adjourn, I'd like to remind everybody that TRCC will be open at 10 o'clock in the morning for the Remembrance Day services and these are going to be public to come and attend and show the support for all the present and past. And I'd like to thank Bert from school for including me in their Remembrance Day this morning. And thank you to councilors that attended the endangered services on the weekend when I was visiting town. That, all for the question, all the, uh, call for Germaine, sorry. Councillor Saw, councillor. Councillor Mackayber, all in favor?